A quorum of council present. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance called by the invocation by Councilman Corey Guy.
Let's remain standing. A kind and good heavenly Father, I want to come thank you for bringing us to this, to this holiday season. Thank you for watching over us all year long and bringing you, bringing us, bringing us all here to this special time of the year where we all sit back and give thanks and love on each and every one of our family members. Lord, I want to personally thank you for bringing my son home, okay? Who's been in South Korea and Philippines and for the last week and a half and had me and his mother just worried to death because he's only 25, but he's been in places that we've never been and brought him back about 30 minutes ago and I thank you for that. Lord, I also thank you for watching over each and every person that's governs this, this, this great county of ours, each and every police officer, each and every fireman, each and every first responder that has brought us right here to this very point in time and continue to watch over each and every citizen here and I ask that you continue to watch over them and their families. Keep them, keep them safe, keep them out of harms way. These and all other things, Lord, continue to act in your, so in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
All right, as we get started, um, item on the, uh, two items on the agenda that have been asked to be pulled off of the agenda, those are items six G and six H. Um, is there a motion to pull that resolution and that first reading?
I'll make a motion, we remove, uh, item six G and six H.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second, is there any discussion? Call for the question, those in favor raise your right hand and say aye. All right, so those two items have been removed from the agenda tonight. All right, so citizens comments, we don't have anyone signed up to speak, we don't have a public hearing tonight, so that leads us straight into six, number six, which is ordinances, resolutions, proclamations. We'll begin with six A, which is a proclamation in honor of Master Sergeant Alfonso J Boyd for his exemplary dedication and service to our nation and community. Glad to have you here with us tonight. A proclamation in honor of Master Sergeant Alfonso J Boyd for his exemplary dedication and service to our nation and community. Whereas, Master Sergeant Retired Alfonso J Boyd served in the United States Army for 22 years and upon returning to Chester County, established and expanded successful JROTC programs at Great Falls, Louisville and Chester High Schools, serving in this role for 12 years. Whereas, for the past decade, Alfonso Boyd has served with a distinction as Commander of Disabled American Veterans, James D Westinger, Chapter 19. Under his leadership, the chapter persevered through the challenges, challenges of the COVID-19 pandemic and continued to serve the veteran community with dedication and compassion. Whereas, Commander Boyd was instrumental in organizing and carrying out numerous programs and events honoring our nation's heroes, including the 2017 Wounded Warrior Amputee Softball Tournament and Banquet, Quilt of Valor Ceremonies, Dinner with the General Events, Veterans Day Parades and personally hosted numerous Memorial Day and Veterans Day Observances over the last seven years. Whereas, Commander Boyd leads a passionate team with the Disabled American Veterans Organization to seek uplift and support fellow veterans, fostering unity, hope and renewed purpose among those who have served. Whereas, he exemplifies the spirit of camaraderie by actively engaging with and encouraging participation in multiple veterans organizations fostering, fostering unity and preserving the enduring attitude of a grateful nation. And through his leadership, he has strengthened collaboration among, among all Chester County veterans groups, coordinating resources and care to ensure every veteran receives the support that they deserve. Whereas, in 2025, the South Carolina Department of Veterans Affairs recognized Master Sergeant Alfonso J Boyd as the South Carolina Veteran of the Month and further honored him as the South Carolina Veteran of the Year for his distinguished service, unwavering dedication and exceptional contributions to his country, his fellow veterans and his community. Now therefore, I Pete Wilson, Chairman on behalf of the Chester County Council, do hereby proclaim that we honor Master Sergeant Retired Alfonso J Boyd for his extraordinary service, leadership and lasting impact on the lives of veterans and the broader community, done on this day, the 17th of November, 2025. If we could, we'll ask you to come forward, we're all going to come down, take a picture with you and give you the plaque.
Absolutely. I'll wait till you guys get seated. Thank you.
Counsel have any words they'd like to say, anyone in council?
Congratulations.
Yeah, ditto. No, thank you, Mr. Boyd, you're always there, you're always bright and cheerful and just, you know, always giving 150%, so we appreciate everything that you do, thank you, sir.
This latest honor is very well deserved, so congratulations.
Remember the first time I ever met you Sergeant Boyd?
Yes, sir.
We knocked your door down, didn't we?
All right, so our next item on our agenda is six B, which is a proclamation in recognition of the Chester County School Resource Officers. A proclamation in recognition of the Chester County School Resource Officers and, um, we have, we have many of them here tonight with us as well. Whereas, the safety and security of the students, faculty and staff of Chester County Schools are top priorities of the Chester County Sheriff's Office, the Chester County School District and local government. And whereas, Chester County Schools are protected by a dedicated team of 14 school resource officers, including two supervisors, one floater and 11 SROs who together put together, who together protect 15 schools located across 10 campuses, serving more than 4,000 students. And whereas, on October 31st, 2025, following a vehicle accident on the Chester Park Campus, SRO Griffin responded swiftly after being alerted by teachers. During this time, the driver gained access to the School of the Arts Playground and forcibly entered a classroom, removing a child. And whereas, the subject was met outside by SRO Stinson, who responded promptly to the call for aid, joined by SRO Alexander and Corporal Going, who also responded to the scene. Whereas, through the swift and courageous actions of SRO Stinson, Griffin and Corporal Going, the child was safely recovered from the suspect, school personnel were able to render immediate medical assistance and the suspect was taken into custody, all within a total event time of less than six minutes. And whereas, the professionalism, bravery and teamwork demonstrated by the Chester County School Resource Officers exemplify their unwavering commitment to both protecting the students and staff of Chester County Schools and maintaining a safe learning environment. Now therefore, I Pete Wilson, Chairman, on behalf of the Chester County Council, do hereby recognize and commend the Chester County School Resource Officers for their outstanding service, courage and dedication and express sincere gratitude for their steadfast commitment to the safety and well-being of our community's children. This is done on this day, the 17th of November, 2025. We'd like to get a picture with y'all as well, so come forward. Counsel have any comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I appreciate all the hard work you put in when incidents like the other day happen, it brings a lot of attention to your job, but your job's tough every day, day in and day out and just like to say thank you for all the good, hard work you do.
Yep, thank you, and I know the kids appreciate you guys because I never hear bad words by SROs, maybe I just talk to the good kids, I don't know, I'm just speaking, I'm just speaking. But no, you guys do a great job and I can't thank you enough, having a child and I know Mr. Wilson has children and grandchildren, you know, from some of us here, um, within the school district and just really truly appreciate your hard work and dedication and just, just can't thank you enough.
I'll, I'll echo that as well, you know, I know it takes a lot of, um, planning and, and training to make events like the other day work out the way they did, that, those things don't just happen by accident. We want to thank each and every one of you for, for the professionalism that you show and for the work that you do, so keep it up, thank you.
I guess I'll just say, uh, thank you guys, your, your job may be harder than some of the other officers' jobs because you have to deal with our kids and grandkids every day and all day and, uh, thank you for, for, for everything that you guys do.
Thank y'all very much. All right, our next item on the agenda, actually, uh, I guess I got ahead of myself, I was excited about the two proclamations and I missed our approval of our, uh, number three, so if y'all don't, if there are no objections here, we'll back up and grab that right now, so that's, uh, number three, three A is the November 3rd, 2025 County Council Meeting Minutes.
I'll make a motion, we approve November 3rd, uh, council meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All right, I'll call for the question, those in favor raise your right hand and say aye. All right, next up is six C, the second reading of ordinance 2025 dash 23 and ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Chester County and Project 2485, the designation of certain real property in Chester County as part of a multi-county industrial park arrangement, providing for the provision of credits against fee in lieu of tax payments, providing for the execution and delivery of such documents as may be necessary to affect the intent of this ordinance and providing for other related matters.
Make a motion to approve, uh, second reading of ordinance 2025 dash 23. Second.
All right, we have a motion and second, is there any discussion? Now I'll call for the question, those in favor raise your right hand and say aye. All right, so that passes six to one. Next is six D, which is the second reading of ordinance 2025 dash 24 and ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax agreement by and between Chester County and Project P 2521, the inclusion of certain real property located in Chester County in a multi-county industrial park, the provision of credits against fee in lieu of tax payments, execution and delivery of such documents as may be necessary to affect the intent of this ordinance and other matters related thereto. Motion on that one?
I'll make a motion, we approve second reading of ordinance 2025 24.
Second.
We have a motion and second, uh, Mr. Esther, for this one, is it okay to say the name of that project or is that still?
That, it's okay to say that, that's Jones Hamilton, which is an expansion project.
Thank you very much, we, I know we spoke about them last time, but just want to make sure everybody was clear which one's which, so, um, we have a motion and second, is there any discussion?
Glad to see businesses staying and growing here, so that's a good thing.
Call for the question, those in favor raise your right hand and say aye. Those opposed? All right, so that motion passes six to one. Next is six E, which is the first reading of ordinance 2025 dash 25 to amend Chapter Two, Article Six, Boards, Committees, Commissions and Districts, Division One, Generally, Section Two dash two six seven, Accountability of All Boards, Commissions, Committees and Districts and Section Two dash two six nine, Administrative and Enforcement Provisions of the Code of Ordinances of Chester County, South Carolina and to provide for other related matters.
Make a motion, we approve the first reading of ordinance 2025 dash 25. Second.
All right, we have a motion and second, um, I would ask Attorney Workman speak to this.
Thank you Chairman, good evening council, on September 15th of this year, uh, Councilman Guy introduced a motion to establish a, a clear requirement regarding training, documentation and adherence to county policies for all boards and commissions. The first proposed amendment strengthens the accountability section for all boards and commissions, um, it adds a training requirement requiring each member to complete training that outlines their scope of work, authority and responsibilities. The second is documentation, um, transparency, adding a provision that requires boards and commissions to maintain all documents in an accessible location, um, and to produce those documents upon request. In addition, all services, whether contracted or non-contracted, must be itemized and included in the annual budget submission, any professional services that are not included in the approved budget must be brought before council for approval if it happens after that budget is approved. The third amendment adds language requiring all boards and commissions to adhere to county policies and, um, that concludes each of the, the three additions to the boards and commissions.
And to make this clear, this is for all boards.
That is correct, this is.
All county boards.
Yes, yes, uh, Councilman Guy, this only includes all boards and commissions, um, this is the general ordinance for boards and commissions that it's included under.
All right, thank you very much, are there any questions or discussion? There are none, I'll call for the question, those in favor of this first reading of ordinance 2025 dash 25, raise your right hand and say aye. All right, that's all in favor. Next is six F, which is Resolution 2025 dash 30, authorizing the transfer of certain personal property and providing for other related matters.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2025 dash 30.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, uh, Mr. Esther, would you want to speak to that?
This is simply Sheriff's Office property which is, um, either end of its useful life or not being used, um, or not able to be used and so this just, uh, resolution allows us for the items in Exhibit A, which is property description, allows us to auction those items off and dispose of county property.
All right, thank you, is there any, uh, any discussion, questions? Call for the question, those in favor raise your right hand and say aye. All in favor? All right, so items G and H, we, we pulled from the agenda, so that takes us straight into the administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, council members, uh, first, I would like to bring your attention to, we're going to bring that slide up for me please, David. Um, as part of our partnership with the Chamber, uh, of Commerce here in Chester, the Chester County Tourism Function is now being, uh, as you all know, ran through a partnership with the Chamber and, uh, as part of their, uh, that partnership, they are rebranding, uh, the county tourism logo. Uh, one part of the initiative was a creation of two new logos and, uh, the website handle that used to be in Chester County is now Visit Chester County. There's a lot of, um, we'll call it algorithms, uh, that go into their choice of Visit Chester County, uh, as opposed to in Chester County, some research within the tourism world, um, but the tourism web, website rebuild is also currently underway, so be on the lookout for some exciting new changes happening with tourism. Um, this is one of the logos that's being used and then can you, and then this is another one that's being used, so there's two formats, I don't have that in front of me as to, um, the difference as to when those are used, but, uh, those are the two logos that they're going to use, just wanted to bring those to council's attention, any questions on those logos? Okay. Thanksgiving holiday schedule, county offices will be closed Wednesday, uh, November 26th, Thursday, November 27th and Friday, November 28th and observance of Thanksgiving holiday. Recycling centers will operate on their normal schedule, they're always closed on Thursday, so, uh, that won't affect Thanksgiving Day, but they will be open Wednesday, November 26th and Friday, uh, November 28th as well as the Saturday, uh, following that on the 29th. The landfill will open, be open on Wednesday, November 26th, which is, um, the day before Thanksgiving and it'll be closed Thanksgiving Day and it'll be back open Friday, November 28th and then Saturday on its normal schedule as well. The South Carolina Department of Revenue recently conducted, and I believe I mentioned this, uh, a while back in administrator's report, but, um, they conducted a compliance audit for Chester County's 1% Capital Project Sales Tax Program. The audit evaluated the collection, use and use of tax revenues from May 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2025. The audit concluded that Chester County is in compliance with the Capital Project Sales and Use Tax Act and the 2020 referendum. Although these results were completely expected, um, it is great news to get confirmation from the state about how Chester County has handled this program. The CPSD program is vital to Chester County and this audit came at a good time as we begin the process to establish another program next year and go, make a referendum to go on next year's ballot. These results should give assurance to our citizens about how these funds have been handled in the past and confidence to keep supporting this program in the future. And a big thank you to all of county staff and the entities involved in making sure that this program has been a success. And I'll just tell you that, you know, these are, it's a random audit, we've never been audited for this program, uh, here in Chester County, um, and so when they first notified us and we, Tommy and I sat down with, uh, the Department of Revenue for the initial meeting for the audit and Tommy brought in these binders that were already ready for DOR and the, the person who came to, um, have that initial meeting and audit, um, commented on, wow, you guys are prepared and you guys, this is more information than we normally get and, you know, very well organized and so just a testament to how well, um, our finances, uh, our financial situation and our fiscal responsibility, um, that's just another testament to that. Then finally, um, I'd like to give another, um, you know, well-deserved accolades to our Gateway Conference Center and, uh, Ms. Amelia Henderson, who's the Gateway Manager, she provided me with an update about a month ago, I was going to bring it to council, but then I was like, well, we're going to wait, uh, another month, I think, I think we were full that night, whatever it was and, um, so anyway, this week she provided me with information that we have booked thus far this year, uh, 187 events and that is nearly the total of events completed all of last year, which was 217. We're not even halfway through the year. The Gateway has reached about 86% of last year's total event volume with half the year and a little more still to go and we are at $335,501 invoiced versus total revenue last year of $438,957. That means that we have already received over 76% of last year's total revenue and we're not even to the halfway mark, so congratulations, um, and keep doing the amazing job that you're doing out there Amelia, we really appreciate the work and the hard work that you put in out there, you and the entire staff at the Gateway, so thank you very much. And with that, that include, concludes my administrator's report.
All right, thank you, Ms. Chester. Next up is, I don't have any old business, consent agenda or old business tonight, so next up is new business, 10A is the Economic Development Update, we have our Economic Development Director, Robert Long. Karen as well.
Uh, thank you Chairman, uh, Wilson and the rest of council, uh, delighted to have an opportunity to talk about, we've had a very busy year in econ development, uh, and, uh, delighted to have an opportunity to, I think, twice a year to kind of give you a quick update, um, so, and, uh, of course, this is a lot of numbers, but I'll try to give some, uh, uh, you know, some, uh, words behind it. We have had 97 projects we've logged in so far this year and we still have about six weeks to go, although traditionally things kind of fall off a little bit after Thanksgiving, but, uh, activity has been very solid, we actually just hosted a project visit last week, so things have not slowed down quite yet for us and, um, and as a side note, uh, of the 97 project that actually tops last year, last year we had a total of 94 projects, we've already exceeded, uh, that number. Uh, but you can kind of see where we have year-to-date as far as activity from both commerce, some of our allies, we, we are obviously an investor in Charlotte Regional Business Lines, I-77 Lines, uh, Retail Strategies, we'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. But the one thing I just want to highlight is, uh, right at this exact moment, uh, through November, we're 13 projects ahead of where we were the exact same time last year, um, and, uh, so, uh, you know, same thing, just a very busy year for us from a project activity perspective. This is just kind of a quick snapshot that kind of shows you, uh, kind of where we're getting our leads from, so there's two columns, uh, we have a year-to-date, which is the 97 projects, the vast majority of those projects are, uh, attraction projects, I mean, these are companies that are currently not in Chester County, uh, that number is much higher than most counties, most counties, uh, it's only about, you know, 50 to 70%, but we're far ahead of that schedule, uh, and we, but I will point out that this is actually the most expansion projects we've actually worked, uh, since I've been here, so it's almost 10% of our projects have been the expansion opportunities. Uh, on the left, we have 65 active projects, active projects means these are projects that have not quite made a decision and they're still very much, uh, we're under consideration. This can include projects left over from last year, uh, that are still active because all, all, most projects from roughly last three to six months, there are the occasional project that can last in some cases several years, uh, and those are still considered active projects, so you have the 65 active projects, uh, 60% of our projects are direct leads, uh, meaning that the company, the consultant, uh, contacted us directly as opposed to our, we do, uh, the people, we always appreciate the leads we do get from our partners with the South Carolina Department of Commerce, I-77, Charlotte Regional and our utility partners, et cetera, uh, but, uh, we are, you know, we're not also sitting back and waiting for them to bring us projects, we are very much out and about, very active in the community, active around the world, as you've, you've seen some of our Facebook posts recently, uh, and I think that does reflect in that 60% of our projects are, are basically self-generated, are direct leads. Um, I will say in the past, uh, we've been rough, averaging about 65% of our projects have tended to be manufacturing, that's down to, uh, 58, but that's only because we have some increased activity under the trade and recycling, it's really the retail trade, so I'll, uh, Karen, talk a little bit about, uh, our relationship with Retail Strategies and some of the retail projects we've, uh, picked up this year.
Thanks, Robert, so as you know, we've engaged Retail Strategies for a year now, um, we're on track to be on a contract with them for three years and they usually suggest that so that they can kind of lay the groundwork, it takes a little while to plant seeds with some of these folks, but just a little bit of an update, so we have, um, our total retail pipelines about 10%, um, a little less than 10%, but that's really exciting, it's up from where it was before, we weren't really tracking retail because we didn't really have that many retail projects. Um, we've attended two retail shows this year, one of which is in Charlotte and it's the Southeast, um, large retail show called ICSC and then also a more boutique, um, type of conference that was in Nashville, so we're kind of hitting it at different angles to. So we're kind of hitting it at different angles to see where we get the best leads from. Specific leads, we have a couple of anchored shopping center projects. Obviously, we can't give too many details in the public session, but one is looking at the Great Falls area, which is really exciting, and then one is considering the Richburg area. And then we're also actively trying to fill the shoe show, the former shoe show that's by Walmart, as well as the Big Lot. So those are two that we have brochures on, and Retail Strategies is actually sending those out to their contacts as well. And then it's a personal goal of mine and Robert's, I think, to get a coffee shop somewhere off of Exit 65. So we're really pushing that. We've, we've sent out, or I've sent out personally, quite a few follow-ups from some of the shows and had some, some leads there. So just a little bit of an update on retail.
Thanks, Karen. So I thought I'd give you a little breakdown as far as the projects we've seen so far this year, the year-to-date, as well as the active projects. Unless there's some spacing errors got off a little bit, but in short, the, the area where we've seen the most projects this year has been in the chemicals and pharmaceutical. It's over 20% of our projects so far this year. And while in the past it has generally been chemicals, I don't think I worked a pharmaceutical project up until this year, and but with the new administration and with Trump, and you've probably seen in the news, a lot of our drugs are actually made around the world. They're not made in the United States, and there's been a big push for some of those to basically bring that manufacturing, reshore those pharmaceutical. And we have seen quite a few of those pharmaceutical projects look in South Carolina, and because we do have large sites that can meet some of those requirements, they've also have looked at us. But you can sort of see that, the one thing I'll point out under active projects, we do have the other miscellaneous manufacturing. Generally, those are electric vehicle projects where we don't quite have enough information to put them somewhere else. But I will say EDV activity supply chain has gone down. That's probably about half of what it was last year. That being said, we think it may pick up again next year with the Scout Motors projects, construction being further along. We think that we will see more electric vehicle projects in 2026. This just, same thing, this looks a little busy, but the main thing I will just point out here is, it kind of talks about what we've talked about before, is manufacturing is becoming more capital-intensive, advanced manufacturing. So we have over 20% of our projects have been basically greater than $150 million. That being said, if you look at the job count, it's sort of in the middle. So $150 million project or greater doesn't necessarily mean it's going to have 500 jobs. We do have a few of those projects that do have a higher headcount, but there's not a direct correlation anymore. There's lots of projects that are much more capital-intensive, a lot more automation, and it's really about the quality of the jobs, not necessarily the quantity of jobs. And I think that's one thing we have really matured as a community, that we can be a lot more selective when it comes to the type of project. We won't, we want companies that are going to be paying above-average wages at our community, and you get that with those advanced manufacturing projects. We have had a busy year for announcement. There are a few of the projects that have, the company has not given us permission to share their name, so we have those marked as confidential. We did close out two additional projects this last month with Chester Asphalt Terminal. We have improved their incentives, then they should be doing the land transfer soon. This is going to be basically adjacent to Ico's mat plant off of Cedarhurst Road, and then we just mentioned Jones Hamilton. But in short, we've done about $330 million in investment and about 330 jobs so far this year. And I'll say our pipeline is also pretty full, so I think we'll have a very active Q1 and Q2 of next year as well, based on the activity we are seeing. So I wanted to just summarize real quickly, kind of other things we're working on and some, just some tidbits of information. One is product development. Here is, we have been working really hard behind the scenes to talk to the private sector developers about partnering on product. And product for us is industrial parks, business parks, and buildings. So I'll talk real quick about Knox Station. This is a site, 180 acres, basically in front of the Robin Sports Complex. Basically, the product has been acquired in, I guess, rezoned already, and we have also, used through our CDA, have done some due diligence work on that. We're still sort of waiting a little bit, you know, for them to give us permission to formally start marketing some of the individual parcels, but they are talking actively to a developer about an anchor spec building in that park to kind of kick that off. And with that, I'll let the other ones, I'll let Karen talk about them.
Thanks, Robert. So the Chester R&amp;D Park, this is one that I'm really excited about as well. So this one was Project Ruttle, one that we had talked about with you guys, and they're going to be doing some spec buildings at the Chester R&amp;D Park, which is a county-owned property off of Highway 99. And so these are going to be Class A metal buildings. Just with the footprint that they have, they can build up to 300,000 square feet. And so the, the size of these buildings really can flex based off of needs. So they'll start out with a 25,000-square-foot building and kind of see how that goes, and then adjust as needed. And then another exciting initiative that we're working on in this park is through the South Carolina Department of Commerce. They got an unprecedented amount of funding for site enhancement, about $80 million. And typically, this number is around $2 to $3 million, so there's quite a bit of money that can be spent on rural site enhancement. And so we put in for the Chester R&amp;D Park to extend the road all the way to the back of the park, water and sewer upgrades. And so recall, there was a sewer system once put into this park, and since it hasn't been used at this point, it needs a lot of testing and some other, other issues with it. So that's another, you know, $1 million that will go towards that. All in all, it's a, it'll, it'll be exciting to see if we get that. We'll find out December 17th if we get those funds awarded, and that would also help Project Ruttle as well, being more marketable. Then C4 is another spec development. This is right behind McDonald's, recall. It is still forested land, but it is currently being marketed for built-to-suit uses, and it can fit about 1.3 million square feet. And that, the owners, the developers, are really flexible on what could go there in terms of the size of the building. So we pitched this for several projects and have several finalists looking at that site. And then last but not least, this is GFI Partners Rail Serve Site, which is right in front of Ico Mat Plant. So one of the projects we recently mentioned, the asphalt terminal, will kind of be between these two sites. And so that's about 20 acres, that's right off of Highway 9 and can be rail-served. And rail's a big deal for us because that's something that makes us unique as a county. Oh, and then last but not least is the Richburg Magnolia Mega Site. So this is in Richburg, it's a little over 1,000 acres, and we're also working, it's a couple of different land developers, or sorry, landowners that we're working with to kind of get these parcels together to market it as one mega site. Duke has actually done a site readiness program on a portion of the site, and right now we're getting funding from South Carolina Department of Commerce to do the rest of the site readiness. And so then we'll be able to market that as a mega site. And mega sites are still, you know, big projects that are helpful for us to have in our backyard because honestly, there's just not a lot left. So it's exciting for us, and we hope to have that due diligence finished up by the end of the year.
Thanks, Karen. So real quickly, you know, we have had 97 projects this year, which already exceeds last year. Our leads from the South Carolina Department of Commerce are up. We've actually had 14 direct leads from the South Carolina Department of Commerce, and I think part of that is us. We've done multiple marketing trips where we have been with Commerce, nurturing those relationships with, there are some new project managers I know Karen's got to spend some time with. And I think that does result in us being top of mind when they have a site that's looking for a large site, looking for rail, looking for a site that can handle heavy gas loads. We have some unique attributes in our community, but that's the highest number of projects we've had as direct leads from Commerce. And another thing is FDI, foreign direct investment. These are international projects that are considering South Carolina and our community. We try to take full advantage of our proximity Charlotte Douglas Airport because oftentimes this is their first location in the U.S. They're going to need to be able to fly back to the parent company, wherever that might be in the world, and having proximity within a 40-minute drive really does put us on a list of other communities nearby that cannot check that box. That being said, last year was about 20% of our overall projects were FDI. This year, it's around 30% of our projects are FDI. And in talking to the South Carolina Department of Commerce, as these trade deals are finalized with the Trump administration, we expect that the FDI activity may actually go higher next year. And the last thing I'll point out is with our Chester Development Association, we do have a date set, so if you could put the save the date for the 15th of January. We have our keynote speaker, so we have Mark Williams. He basically is with a site selection consulting firm called Strategic Development Group, but he is also a published author, and he just actually published his second book. So in essence, we'll have him speak, but we'll also be giving away copies of his book, and then we'll actually have a book signing after the event as well. So please do mark your calendar for 15th. That is a lunch program, so doors are open at 11:30, we'll start serving lunch at 12:00. The program will start at 12:30, and we should be done around 1:30, except for the book signing, that'll happen afterwards. But since we're actually are going to be having him for the day, he has agreed for us to do a real estate tour with him afterwards as well, so we will be showing him some of our available real estate. So same thing, please mark your calendar for that, and we look forward to hosting everybody at that annual banquet on the 15th of January. With that, I will be happy to turn it over to y'all if y'all have any questions for myself or for Karen. And again, we appreciate the opportunity to talk about all the exciting stuff happening in Econ Development in our community.
What is January 8? I got a, an email about January 8. There's a York County or I-77 meeting at the Gateway.
I believe that is...
Is that y'all?
No, that's the State Chamber. That's the State Chamber partnering with the local chamber, the hosting event, I believe this is what that is. And it just happens that it's going to be at the Gateway Conference Center, but, you know, but I think York Tech is partnering with the State Chamber on that event. Or is it, nevermind, you quick around.
Is it an evening event?
That's the Catawba Regional Forum. So that is actually...
Four, five, six, or something like that.
Yeah. So this is being put on by, by the Catawba Regional Council of Governments.
Oh.
It's their year-end event where they, they'll do like a year-end review, and it's got a heavy reception associated with beforehand.
All right. Any other questions? Thank y'all very much for that.
Appreciate it. Thank you all for counsel.
Appreciate the work you do. Next up is 10B, which is the SE 250 Grant Match. I'll call for Britt Stoudamire.
Good evening, council. Mr. Chairman, nice to be here tonight. Coming to you to ask for a match for the, a grant match for the South Carolina 250 Museum and Exhibit Grant. Let me give you the overview quickly and the purpose real quick. This grant supports the creation or expansion of exhibits that educate the public about South Carolina's direct role in the American Revolution as part of the state's 250th commemoration. The purpose of this grant would be to fund the full design and fabrication of the Revolutionary War exhibit, just the Revolutionary War exhibit in the Veterans History Center. And this would include a digital touchscreen battle map, replica South Carolina Patriot militia uniform, display case, large mural wallpaper, PVC panel prints, dimensional quote lettering, and related exhibit components. I'm going to show you a conceptual, some conceptuals here in a moment, but this Revolutionary War exhibit and the grant are fully supported by the Chester County South Carolina 250 Commission. In fact, some of them are here tonight, and they came to me while we were having some of our meetings on the Veteran History Center and said, hey, this would be a good project for our 250th commemoration, to really make this Revolutionary War exhibit really nice. Mr. Marion wrote a nice letter of support to go along with our grant application, and this project aligns with their strategic plan, their goals, and their mission. So excited to, to help be a part of that. All right. Just to give you a little bit about the preliminary floor plan, HW Exhibits produced this with a lot of guidance from a team that we have that's giving input. Some of them are here tonight, and I appreciate their, all their input and their support. But as you see, when you come in, look up where you see Welcome, Economic Development is on the other side. Right when you walk in and to the left, that big wall will be where the Revolutionary War exhibit is. And then we go War of 1812, Civil War, Volunteer Desk, Interactives, Kiosk, World War I, II, Korean War, Vietnam War, modern wars, and serving in peacetime. It's, it's all sequential. And then in the middle is the heart of Chester County. That's where we have the Dearborn Arsenal exhibit, the effects on the home front, and the efforts at home. All of that is in the middle. Also, the 371st and the Carolina maneuvers. But here tonight, we're here to talk just about the Revolutionary War section, and I wanted you all to see where it was located when you walk in. Here's a conceptual from the back wall looking out toward the parking lot. We have a lot of windows there that we're working through, but the Revolutionary War exhibit would be on your right. All right. This is a conceptual, so some of these images and panels may change, but just to give you an idea of what that wall would look like. The wall would be fully wrapped. We'd have a placeholder there for the replica, four panels, a big panel, and then the interactive map screen and a panel under that telling you what's on the map. Now here's the better picture here. This really shows you our design. Again, don't get too much into the details. That, a lot of that's there just as a placeholder, but you'll see Fish Dan Ford, Battle of Beckinsville, Fishing Creek, maps. Over on the interactive, it'll have maps. This, this is a really nice exhibit that's going to really show the history of Chester County in the Revolutionary War. This grant is a competitive grant that will be distributed with 80% upfront and 20% reimbursed upon approval of completed final report. What we're requesting tonight is council support for a 12,500 match that would enable the county to apply for a $50,000 South Carolina Museum and Exhibit Grant to do the Revolutionary War exhibit in this center. As part of the grant requirements, the exhibit must remain on public display and accessible through at least year 2033 in recognition of South Carolina's official 250th commemoration. As you know, the Undiscovered Grant is 20 years, but this one is just the seven. The application date is due November 12th, so that's why we're here tonight. And then if we get past that round, there's a question and answer session with the commission in February, and then the award will be given in March. So to give you guys the timeline, our hope is to have our final design plan from HW Exhibits next month, and we're hoping to put this out for procurement in January. So we want to have this project finished during the 250th year toward the end of the year, sort of the timeline. So that's all I have. Are there any questions?
I don't hear any.
Good.
So, fraction tonight, you want to speak to that, Brad?
So just looking for council to approve the grant match of 12,000, 12,200, I'm sorry, I had to find it on my paper. If council, I give you a brief. The Undiscovered Grant was for $100,000. We carried over $40,000 from the previous year for that project. Our match was $100,000, we carried over $40,000. Council approved the use of additional ATAX funds. The balance of our ATAX funds right now are $594,000, and then we're asking for 12,500 more to be allocated for this $50,000 grant. So this will total 150,000 in grants that we've received, and our total input from the county side, counting the Undiscovered Grant, will be $112,500. So we receive 150, we pay 112, and again, that's only two grants thus far, so. And our expected, I don't know if Britt had mentioned, but our initial, and again, these are just rough estimates that, based off square footage of the visitors, the Veterans and Visitors Center, Discovery Center, rough estimates were around $200,000. So I think thus far, once, once we go out for bid, this will give us right at 250,000 for the project.
Absolutely.
All right. So there's a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion to approve the $12,500 match.
Second?
If, if, if I could, just out of ATAX funds.
Out of ATAX funds.
Thank you.
Second, that also.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, raise your hand to say aye. All, all in favor. Thank you very much for this update and all the information, and I think the information you presented was really vivid, and we appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I could say one more thing, and when Ms. Mosley gave her update, the last council meeting I was at about the project, just proud of our veterans and everything we're doing is to, is to magnify what they've done, what they've done for our country and our veterans here from Chester County and what they've done for us. I just want to make sure I say that and you guys hear that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So that brings us straight on down to council comments.
Roy and I went to the York Tech Open House the other night, and I don't know if any of you guys, the ladies, anybody in, in the room have been down there, but they have really done a really nice job of doing that. We had a foundation that gave them $30,000 to put in a certified nursing assistance lab. They brought their certified nursing assistant program from York and York County to Chester, and that's where they're teaching it at now. And they've got a really good staff. It was, it was a real nice evening to spend with those folks and see what they're doing out there. They have a Lima class out there. They, Duke Powell, I think, is paying or they got something to do with that. But if you get a chance and you can go out there and meet with some of those folks, that's, that's amazing, the number of young people, not just from Chester County, but from other counties is coming in here to take that certified nursing assistance program, hospitals and nursing homes. So that's, that's pretty good.
Great Falls is always the kickoff for the Christmas parade season. Their parade is the 23rd, this Sunday. I believe it starts at 3:00.
So I've got two things. One is I did want to mention our new website. I've had, I've had a little bit of opportunity to look at it, and it's really good. So we want to thank our IT Director, Davis Wilkie, for his work in that and everyone else. We helped along the way, but everybody check it out if you haven't already. It's, it's really, really good. The other thing is along the same, same lines as Mr. Brunson, Larry's will have their tree lighting that they do every year. That's going to be Friday, November 28th at 6:00 P.M. So that's always a lot of fun. There's some music and light the tree, so and some refreshments too. Anything else?
I know Lando will be having their tree lighting as well that Saturday evening, I believe it's at 6:00 o'clock as well. So just to kind of remember that as well, too, for folks in that part of the county.
All right. There's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.